This past six, thanks for being here, everybody. It's a work session this evening, so a little less formal than. Than normal, but I hear you going with they're really informal and like but they're feet up on the table and.
I mean, I I think I need to wear shoes to.
We'll keep it pretty straight this evening, um but we have. Uh four things on the agenda tonight, so we'll start out with a update um from Jonathan and I'll introduce at the moment then we'll uh. With our friends from Art of Space, um who are here for an update and then a planning and zoning commission update and the board updates. So lots of updates. No decisions, that's great. Um so we'll start off uh Mayor Winwood, Jonathan Gottes. Um has a new position and I'll let you describe what that is for DOLA and and we had just had a conversation about this and. Um thought it'd be good for our board to be informed about this new position and maybe how we can access those services.
Yeah, so thank you, Mayor, uh Council, presti, excuse me.
That's not what I want.
Uh so yes, I am here tonight as the Regional Grants Navigator for the Northwest Coloradoization of Governors. Um not DOLA, but uh but we were very closely with DOLA, so it's it's similar. Um and and so what what my position is, so Northwest, you guys know what Northwest COGS is?
Maybe give us a little reminder, we're a member, we hear that phrase, but I don't think we're.
So funny story about that. Oh no, yeah, the Northwest COGS was like blah blah blah, yeah, I'm going to Carbondale, they're like, great, you know, they'll be able to use that information, so. And see if they'll ever become a member again, but.
We're all only through QQ.
Yeah.
Okay. So um I will have like some slide. At the end, I had originally in the beginning talked about what COGS is, but uh maybe I'll do the COGS thing towards the end. So e- every in Colorado, there's fourteen COGS, Colorado uh Associations of Governors, so. Garco County is correct, is part of A C and G, especially Governor of Northwest Colorado. Um for whatever reason, Glouw Springs is a member of both A C and G and COGS. Uh they're just different. COGS do different things and have different values to those efforts, so uh we get the best of both of them. Uh and so. Uh my name is Jonathan Gottes, Regional Grants Navigator. Uh what what my position is, it's a newly created position from O E D from the state. That was created to uh basically help facilitate the member organization of COGS. Uh but but each COGS has one, so if if not me, I'm just doing the heavy lifting for A C and G, A C and G will probably have somebody here. Giving a similar presentation in a couple of months. They're just in the process of hiring that position for their COGS. Uh and so my position is I work uh fair, I would say exclusively with the I I J A, which is also the. B I L, the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, um that is actually called the Inflation Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. And also the Inflation Reduction Act, the IRA, so there's about one point three, one point two trillion. And money that's come down through that and another about half billion through the IRA. Um and and a little bit with ARPA, although ARPA, a lot of that, most of that is. Already been done, that's a lot of COVID relief, but there's some important things that I'd still like to talk to you about. Uh most of the grants opportunities require some type of matching fund, so you know, if you're looking to uh do a multi-million dollar project. You need to have a little bit reserved. A lot of times it's ten, twenty percent, so it's not, it's not a lot. Um sometimes that you're required to just have non-federal matching funds, so you might be able to have matching funds from DOLA, for example. From the county, from other sources, it helps kind of stack that that funding ground, yeah, uh yeah. They don't really care typically. A lot of it's planning, construction based, um some of this money, especially the. Um Inflation Reduction Act is meant to get out, and Inflation Reduction Act, I'm not going to talk about so much, there is definitely some money, some funds there. But a lot of that is direct to consumers, so it is um rebased for geothermal heat pumps, it is. Um whether uh whether s- weatherization, it is um thing, things like that. Uh electric E V chargers, uh you know, things that are more are rebased. So a lot of that, you know, there is a lot of federal dollars, but more I'm going to be talking about the the B I L, the I I J A. Uh so example, you see is the alphabet soup of EPA, USDA, DOT, EPA. Um pretty much every agency in the federal government has. When they such like justice and homeland security, well, even homeland security has has some funds spread throughout them. Um next. Sorry to bring my laptop. I just broke myself. Uh so Colorado share, this is interesting, so a lot of this is allocated on a pro-rata. Proclamated version version um to individual states, and then there's pots of money that is not allocated in state level, but. Uh you can just kind of read what is allocated, everything that's in parentheses is Colorado share. Some of it is over five years, some is three years. Um you know, the things, you know, especially when thinking about this presentation in Carbondale. Um obviously clean buses with our membership with our uh the your membership of graph, yeah. Um E V charging, this is uh fifty seven million over five years, it's a statewide build out, so. Um you know, it's wherever we can have chargers to make that network more robust, obviously. Uh resiliency is a really important line, it it is where uh it's it's climate change, it's weather events, so things like watershed restoration. Things like um replacing water, a lot of water pipe replacement, a lot of, uh do you guys have any? Uh light pipes in Carbondale?
I don't think so.
Yeah, we don't think one would either, but. Yeah, okay, so that's, a lot of that is light pipes uh replacement, but when you talk about resiliency and. And if you're going to replace something or do a project, we have to now make it very climate resilient and that. Sometimes it's a little more expensive. Um and then there's other, and these other things are things that don't necessarily impact you at all, you don't have your own um, your Holy Cross, right? Okay. So but you don't have your own, you have your own municipal?
No, it's electric, no, we have XL and Holy Cross, we're split.
Yeah, okay, so you know, that grid upgrade, airport, ports and waterway, there's a bunch of things that just. Uh the DOT, uh the Raise Grant, this is probably one of the larger ones we should be looking at for. Um a lot of organizations, and this is, sorry, Michael, is that?
No, you need to be a little bit closer.
Sorry. So the Raise Grant, this is um. Probably one of the more widely available ones to uh municipal governments in Colorado. Uh Raptor was, as I have down there, uh we won a, we as a member agency. You as in uh Carbondale, uh one part of it is called the Westward Three, it's a multimodal project, it was Grand Junction, Rifle. And then the operations center in Glouw Springs is twenty-four million dollars, so that money's already coming to our local communities. Um eh the infra freight and highway projects. The thing that, you know, I I didn't want to try to highlight it every time, but you know, and not to um. Give anybody a sense of doom, but regional significance, a lot of these things are, you 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 need to read it and go. Okay, are we an undeserved community? Carbondale's not, by a lot of metrics. Now, you can choose some shoehorns and things, especially if we talk about housing. Um housing is one of those areas where maybe we could go for a grant and make a case that that we are, but when we talk about um. The diversity or the communities that um it there's just not a lot, honestly, in the Mountain West, so we're just. Um so the thing that I want to emphasize there is we talk about regional significance. The reason that Westward Three brand was ultimately successful was because it was large, it was full, it connected a region. And the the idea of that was that it would eventually connect and does connect. Um bus staying and snow staying and the whole the whole spans of statewide transportation networks. That is of statewide and regional significance, so if there's something that you guys are looking to do. And it's. I don't know, like eight hundred thousand, a lot of money for a small community, um but it it's probably not worth a large federal grant. The time and effort to apply for, to uh monitor, to report on. Uh I'm not saying it can never be, because every grant has different report reporting requirements. Um but but think really hard before you go for a large federal grant about what's going to be worthwhile. And if there is something that you need, whether it is watershed restoration, regional significance hypothetically would be the entire Crystal River Valley. So where, who are your partners? Gunnison, Marble, um obviously Redstone. Um the ranchers, the uh water, the water rights holders, um the Roy Fork Anglers, those are your partners. That that's something that would be probably borderline regionally significant, obviously if you did something roaring for a wide watershed. It has more regions, so um that that I don't want to beat that to death, but. We're thinking about these rural surface transportation grants, again, connectivity, improve safety, reliability, uh bridge investment programs. Uh we have a lot of bridges that need to be replaced or new bridges, but those are uh those are the things in DOT. Um next, pedestrian products also, so if there's a need for pedestrian access, that's not a bad one. Uh USDA rural uh development grants, these are uh technical assistance. These are great, the rural grants are, this is kind of where I think the bread and butter are, we are rural, we're under fifty thousand. Um these are the grants that have lower reporting and um reporting requirements. So ten to fifty thousand, uh five, ten thousand to five hundred thousand. And which nice is because if they envision a lot of small, really rural um low capacity communities. There is no cost sharing compartments on these specific grants. Uh there's enterprise and opportunity grants that can help with feasibility studies. We're business incubators, um business strategic plans, next. Uh and then we drive into Economic Development Administration, uh the E A, these again, technical assistance, planning, this is public works. And public works mean, yeah, we don't just need money for sewage water, groundwater treatment. It is what, how can we expand in order to facilitate, uh sorry. Facilitate um economic development, so we need a quarter mile raw water line to service this new business park we want to do. That's the kind of uh public version talking about. Uh they thought, love if I broadband, uh tourism or industrial site assessments redevelopment, this gets in like brownfield. Type things, um I was thinking about you guys and and I don't know a whole lot, but you talk about North Main, right, is that kind of a?
They call it north. Used to be called the Overlook or um downtown north.
Downtown north, okay.
Right up there across that.
Yeah, yeah, and so I think that's that's one of those, I don't know, it's considered industrial, but. Part of that technical assistance grant would be to find uh it, you know, what kind of soils are there, what what hazards are there? What's what's the geotechnical composition there? Um and then tourism, tourism revitalization uh uh projects. Uh the Rise Grant, that's to be confused with a Raise Grant, uh this is to high wage jobs, this is again, a lot of economic development. Um these are larger, these are the uh rural partnerships, these are accelerators. Uh half million to two million, these do require the twenty percent match, so think more. Roy Fork rather than Crystal River, I guess, as far as largest and then significant. Um, let's see. Yeah, next. I hate what people are reading the slides and that's all I'm doing apparently. Again, the brownfields, I got thinking like downtown north, I I think would be a great uh ask for that potentially. Um the 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 brownfield assessments grant, Glouw Springs got one about five years ago, identified three different brownfield sites. And so one of them was our old sewage treatment plant, which is now the confluence. It's still completely scraped and there's, but but this, the grant that uh Sue Glouw Springs got was this grant. A number of years ago, and so all the um master planning, all the uh. Are they are queues for developers that, you know, taking the whole community through that process and getting to a point where. We could start to move forward with political will, um that that is, that was done through a brownfields grant. Uh clean water state revolving funds, these are um. These, these are great, they're they're both grants and loans, but they're super low interest. Um and basically, as you take it out and pay it back, I think that might even be, I don't know, I think they're interest free or one percent. They're they're a really great use, uh and you can use uh private participation bonds if you look for new raw water treatment facilities. Secondary intake, um and then uh most uh communities around here don't have lead lines. But that, they're really big on lead line service replacement. Uh and like I said, uh American Rescue uh Plan Act, most of this is already out the door. All this, this is a lot about COVID recovery, but I highlighted the one thing, invest in water source, broadband, infrastructure. Uh make necessary investments, improve access to clean drink water, yeah, now you read that. Um this is the one kind of caveat that is still lasting for our funds, so while most of that is. You know, not not the dustbin of history, thankfully, um there is some left, and I think that that's something that um any community can still explore. Thanks.
I'm trying.
Okay. There we go, the question is, um well, what questions do you have? I'll pause, because I.
I mean, that's a lot of detail, obviously, and but I think we appreciate you, I recommend that we probably don't go down the rabbit hole of any of those grants specifically. But I think what's helpful is that, and we'll talk about. Whether we can access your services, I wasn't aware of that till right now, but.
I wasn't till about three hours ago, yeah, sorry.
Um what's interesting to me is whether it's it's Jonathan or somebody else uh with the group that we are part of, the idea that. There's somebody out there who can help us navigate all this, because we just feel unable to access this. You know, huge amount of federal funding that everybody's always talking about, and so obviously we have projects that we can't quite afford. And we want to access grants, but we don't have a grant writer on staff, and so that was my main goal with this, was just to get this overview of. Um there's a lot of money out there and we have somebody who might be able to help us with that, but does anybody want to talk about any of those? I just wouldn't go too deep into the.
And um thanks for this and congrats on the role, can you talk a little bit about what your role is along these lines?
That's that's a great question, so um my role is to. Basically go a little a lot in this, is here's what's out here, here's what, you know, I think, you know, I know Glouw. I know Carbondale a little bit, enough to say North Main and not have it exactly right, um. And so trying to, you know, understand the communities, understand the communities' needs, what their highest priorities are, and then hopefully finding grants. That are appropriate and and understanding what communities in Colorado have gotten grants and then successful, what kind of communities. And trying to steer communities to that, what I don't do is actually write the grants, I am not a grant writer, I'm not going to, you know, put two hundred hours, which is. You know, depending on the size of the grant, I mean, it's a huge process, it can be, can be a huge process. So what, I I'll tell you, in COGS, um we don't have to go to the rest of the slides, it's all about what COGS is and what they do, the overview, but. COGS is six county region, it's Rouse Summit, uh Grand, uh Eagle, in and. No, Noah Jackson. Um Garco is part of the north or is associate governors of Northwest Colorado, which is Moffitt, Rio Blanco. Uh Garfield and Mesa. They are much more focused on oil and gas and guns, apparently. They have, they just take a lot of position on guns or whatever, um and so, but but their economic portion of it is. Is outside of that, so there's going to be somebody that is with, and I don't know if Carbondale's a member of A C and G or not. The county might be, but that doesn't mean that municipality is, it 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 can be, it doesn't have to be. Um I know we've got to check them both, so what other communities in COGS do is everywhere from. Stevo Springs have two full-time grant writers and have had for decades, um in-house, uh and. Summit County has two grant writers, they've had one, they've just expanded to two, partially take advantage of this. Uh Brett Enrich has their own in-house grant writer, Eagle County has their own in-house grant writer. Um Avon, Glenwood, uh Snowmass and Village. And Silverdore or Dillon, whatever one uh one of those do, I'm actually confused. Has a contracted grant writer and a specific one called Sustainable Strategies, and so um they. Probably won't take you on as a client, as Ben's writing it down, um they're fantastic, uh. Our, we lost our old city manager to them, uh unfortunately, but they are. What I would say is, if you, before jumping in, maybe, I'm not speaking out of turn, before you jump in with a full-time. I staff grant writer, um there's a lot of agencies out there, K L A, I think works with Gypsum and a few other uh. Uh municipalities, I think it's K L A. Um but, you know, find one that is aligned with your values, sustainable strategies, just in their name are very aligned. What else do they bring to the table other than just grant writing? Will they do lobby? Will they do outreach? Do they do community building? Do they, I mean, what else are they other than just writing grant? Do they have other Colorado clients? Um you know, it's just some outfit out of Dallas that is kind of successful, has gotten some large grants, but. They don't know about DOLA's role in our state, they don't know about Tabor, they don't know about some of these finer points, they're not going to be real successful. So I I would say that, and then there's other communities, much smaller communities that don't have the capacity that that truly Carbondale probably does. Like Frazier, Frazier's, Frazier has their assistant city manager, city manager, right, all their federal grants. And I think that that is just a massive time suck, and so they're looking to move away from that, and they're kind of at that inflection point of. Somebody on staff or a a a contract position. Um Castle for Springs, uh they just have two, like a clerk and assistant clerk. So uh a lot of that is, I will work with them, I'll be reviewing grants, that's also my role is, is before they go out the door. Where they work with somebody in-house, where they work with a contract agency, whether Ben writes himself, um you're not smiling, you should smile a little bit. You know, I I would, I would take a look at it and just put in a set of eyes on them, I have a history of grant writing, so I can probably provide a little bit of value. Uh as well, so that that would be a super long answer to where are, where are we, what should we do, there's a whole host of things, but. In my opinion, I think that um Carbondale probably has the capacity to um. Engage with a grant writing um contractor or bring it in-house, it it but it's. It's a big enough project that is grant writing in general, that to put it on existing staff, I'm gonna put like. Like staff advocate head up here, put on exist, you're wrong, put on existing staff, it's, it won't get done well. It's just such a large um all encompassing thing, and and it takes, when there's a grant and a grant deadline that's a month away. That's all of your city manager, that's who's going to do it, or your clerk. If that's all, if that's what you give them, that's all their job is going to be for. That has to be, right?
And that's why we haven't applied for a lot of recreation, uh Park and Rec Department has been, I think, the most active historically and currently on pursuing grants. And otherwise, we rely on Clear, you know, to go after some grants for the more sustainable and climate sort of stuff, um but. We don't have somebody focused on outside of that. Um we just have a couple of minutes left before we get on to our next item, other questions for. Sounds like we've got some talking to do about which group we join or or our members of and why not, and I I don't need to get into all that right now, but I. I thought we were a member of Northwest COGS and, you know, um we were at some point, because I remember it on our. List of things that we represent, but.
Before me.
Yeah.
I asked that question when I came in, because I was used to working with COGS.
And and honestly, I would say that, you know, I'm doing the anti-sell pitch, but if you do contract with somebody who has done grants in Colorado. That's the route you go. They're going to be plugged into a lot of this stuff, and so, you know, I think COGS provides a lot of value, and so that's why we're members. Even though we are part of the agency geographic range, um but. You have to, you know, it it because I won't be writing the grants for you, just be facilitating that with whoever you do hire or whoever is on staff.
That's good.
Sorry.
I was just going to say, you're talking federal grants only.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right.
Question, hadn't uh COGS given money during the pandemic?
Yes.
To Carbondale? And Garfield County senior programs?
So uh COGS does a lot with senior programs, I don't know what they did, they have um. Not the travel, because that's Garco County, but they have uh.
There's something called the Valley Meals and More.
Okay.
And when that started, and that was during the pandemic, I can remember COGS was one of the initial funders of that.
Okay, I I I believe you, I I just, I've been uh employed now for sixty days. I'm the new guy.
Okay, no, and, okay, so.
So, yeah, so like literally that's like COVID response broadband, I mean, this is uh Project Thor, Project Thor, if you don't know, uh it's a broadband. Backflow for.
Okay, and like elevator inspections, is that COGS?
That is.
Okay.
I think that was the only reason we were a member before, and then we weren't, it's a customer very much, so then it was.
Okay, because I know, I thought we were a member. Before your time.
We all, I swear, I, it's three hours ago when I was talking to John Stave, the executive director, I thought Carbondale was a member too. So I was like, great.
How long has he been there?
I think he's been there six years.
Okay.
He's like, yeah, tell him, tell him, tell him hi, and we'd love to have back, and been a member for a couple of years.
Yeah, I think we pulled our, I think we just, we, that was the only service that at least our town manager at the time. Felt like we were using and made a recommendation to us that we not renew and um, but I feel like that was like four years ago or something.
Okay, I realized I was like, but that would be an option if we wanted to join with COGS again?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And what was that involved financially on our part?
That is outside of my category.
I'll find out, Marty.
Well, I mean, are you speaking about five thousand a year, or are you speaking about fifty thousand a year?
I don't know, because all I'm familiar with is Connecticut COGS first of all.
I mean, good question, Marty, I think our next step would be um to ask more and to look into some of our options, right, for potentially. Uh itching on to one of these consultant-based grant writing firms that it sounds like does this, and then some, or. Um rejoining Northwest COGS or the other group, A G and C.
A G and C, yeah, that doesn't be, if you want to be a member of one of the two, uh. You can be a member of either one, like I said, Glouw's a member of both, but you were geographic area because of Garco County, of A C and G. I I think it wise and 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 uh values-wise, Northwest COGS is much more aligned with. Carbondale's values.
Okay, that's good to know. Um and I don't feel like it's an urgent thing, but I just feel like we continually ask this question of, oh, there's all this federal funding. How are we going to end, access it? We don't really have an answer, so it'd be good to have a little bit of a strategy for this.
I guess the mention of urgent is kind of very similar, is what is the like? Timeline, I know these bills happen, then there's a slow, grindingly slow process of disbursement of funds. Um do we, it almost sounds like we've already like missed the. The running of the race here, if we, if all these other towns have stood up in-house, grant keep writers and have. Projects shovel ready or whatnot, and we're still sort of funneling through the beginning steps of it, are we like? What is the, what does it look like in terms of like the length of these, these projects being, you know, or grants being available? Because we heard about these housing grants that four million dollars or something, you know, evaporated instantaneously, and. Okay, great, okay, who knows if we're going to get another round of these bills at any time in the future, so it's like, how realistic are we? Well, be about. These federal, yeah, the these federal grants are going to be, they're five to ten years out, and and really at five years, the the way they structured it is. Like with presidential term, so a lot of money is is going out um over the next three to five years. That's why one of my first slides is five years this, five years that, and so, uh I mean, it was only. Five, six months ago, the Inflation Reduction Act was even passed, they still don't have, or uh uh the bipartisan structure. While they still don't have about a third of the money, even, they don't even know what agency they're going to put it under to allocate the money. Like literally something just came out, uh. Sorry, it wasn't. It was yesterday about this new opportunity with money from this bill, so no, you're not too late. Um but I think it is once in a generation an opportunity to get some of these infrastructure conversations started. And if you have something shovel ready, I don't know what it is, I sure you know. Uh but but there there's something that's in the process enough that it's going to be, and there's planning grants, right, so like, again, I I. Maybe the only paper I ever read was the one day there was starting the blood or paint, I'm sorry, I gave. I'm sorry, I keep bringing this up, but like that is a prime example of a brown, potential brownfield, a redevelopment, a use, maybe affordable housing, where you can lay double money on top of Prop one twenty-three money. You know, it's going to be a mixed use housing, affordable housing, potentially retail type redevelopment. There's like four or five different grants, and there's even a grant for railroad access. So if you need to access that, you need to great separate the Rio Grande, like there's money out there for that. So I, I, I think that, you know, the, the long answer I'm giving you is no, it's definitely not too late. But if you're going to go for something, I think there's urgency because the deadlines do keep coming up, but they will be coming up in the next five years. So maybe not tomorrow, but maybe in the next couple of months, start to talk seriously about it, maybe.
All right, thanks, John. This is really important. I think Lauren and I'll touch base and maybe get in contact with you again about some of those options. And see how we can just provide ourselves with some access to some potential funding.
And regardless of whatever you do with COGS, your neighboring community, just personally, I will do have my own time. I will help you guys out. So don't, John, I said that, but happy to help you guys out anytime.
Thanks so much, John.
And all I need is free passes to the five months.
Alright, thanks, John.
That's nice. Don't forget your USB drive.
Oh, yeah.
No, no, you have it. No, I'm.
I didn't bring a computer.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Right, next update is Art Space. Join us gentlemen. Thanks for being here.
Well, if you want to take that desk, you'll have a mic too, and then you'll be able to be heard. Thanks. Oh, it's not plugged in?
We'll see, Will's. There we go. Just get the zoom back up there, please, so that we can see if there are any questions.
Oh, alright, I'll get it.
I stopped sharing, but it didn't go away.
We don't have a specific agenda for this. It's just a kind of a check in. I had the pleasure of, of working with Andrew and Will earlier today. But maybe you can start by introducing yourself, tell us what's, what's going on with the project. And I think a, a general timeline of where we are and what's next is always helpful. So meeting mayor, trustees, Andrew Michelson with Art Space. Thanks for coming in and give you an update on the work that we're doing both today and what we see going forward. So happy to dive in that a little bit, but before we do so, my colleague, Will Long, is trying to stay as well.
I just want to say hi and I'll be working with Andrew and as we move more into the sort of development phase, while working here in the community. And happy to be here and it was neat all of you, hard working for you. I'm, I'm a physician, so thanks, thank you very much. Folks from Carbondale Arts and the Thunder Theater and not sure who else out there. So if you want to join the conversation, feel free, it's a pretty casual check in.
So the reason we're here, I mean, this evening and tomorrow primarily is that we are conducting interviews with architectural firms that responded to our request for qualifications that we, this was early March, late February, and that was responsible for due later part of March. So we've reviewed those responses, we've received six in total. We elected to interview five of those teams. The one team that we did not elect to interview was a team based out of New Mexico. Primarily, they got introduced to us through some of the predevelopment work that other colleagues of ours are doing down there. And frankly, just giving the quality of the response we had from local teams, we didn't think it really warranted having them come in. So nothing against the team other than that essentially. So we have one interview today, we have four more tomorrow. Myself, Will, along with Lauren from the town, Bob, and then members of the council are participating in that to see presentations from these teams. And also to have an opportunity to have, you know, both question and answer, and frankly, just a conversation about who they are, how they operate, what they see as, you know, potentials pitfalls and things like that related to the town center site. Really looking to determine, you know, not only who's best qualified, but who's going to be the best fit for advancing this really grants community vision. So good mix of the, the objective and certain subjective elements of, you know, who can do it? I think that all can do it. Who do we want to work with? Who's going to bring those, those, you know, team elements to this design team? And we were hoping to, coming out of these interviews, have some, you know, discussions and consensus and make a decision. Select a team late this month, early May, get them on board and start doing that, that design. Which really I think is probably pulling back to like a ten thousand foot level and saying, okay, we all know town center. We know, you know, there's a lot to be known, bring them in, make sure they have the information. And then kind of restarting a lot of those conversations we've already had, the town, community stakeholders, you know, the theater obviously, but other potential user groups to, you know, bring in from a design perspective now. What, what do we want to build? What can we build? How do we build it? Where we put it? Balance out with some of the conversations we already started talking about last year. You about, there's going to be some conversations about zoning and planning and approvals and access. And what is that all about? So that I really see being, you know, the bulk of our work on this front through sort of mid to late part of this year. And I think that's going to include some public shreds. There's going to be some concept things, some massing on sites. Planning, because we're going to need to both see what fits, how we can fit it and get that input too. So really kind of high level, not a lot of detail as far as finishes and things like that. But I think it won't get too, where do we think driveways could go and how are we going to park this? How tall do we think it's going to go? And where do we think which components of it? And to, and get those responses, hopefully get to a point by the end of this year where we have a pretty good sense of what makes the most sense, what is getting the most support and what is going to deliver the most impact, both culturally and also by value and what is built. You know, we don't want to start advancing something that we can't finance or that puts the onus on organizations to raise funds. It's just not achieved. Then I really think the bulk of twenty twenty-four is going to be tracking down those dollars, putting applications in, getting those pieces pulled together. And really looking towards possibly by the end of twenty-four, having dollars secured enough to start advancing towards closing construction on, on some component of that. And what that all looks like, I think we'll know a lot more as we go through that finding process and start to get through some of those really granular elements. So there's, there's a lot of work that's going to be coming. I think a lot of advice, not be very sort of readily apparent to the public. So we're not going quiet, but you might not see, oh, you might not see shovels. You might not see fencing and, and trucks and cranes on the site real soon, but there's going to be a lot of that work behind the scenes. And a lot of that public facing work as well, when we can be more information gathering and listening to that input. So that's why we're here today. Really excited to be doing that and advancing this piece and making this team several. And, you know, I have a few questions from there, talk about, you know, who we're talking to or how we're advancing or whatever you'd like to, but other than that, happy to be here and doing the work. So thank you for the opportunity to be on this evening.
Great, thanks. And I think, you know, part of this is a, it's a partnership where we need to get to know each other over time. So I appreciate you coming, coming here and being in town. And I think the more, the more time that you spend in town and walking around and going into businesses and seeing how people operate and spending time around the site, just the better little project will be. So we appreciate it. Completely agree. Any questions from the board? On some new things?
Lonnie and I ended up splitting the duty of being there, nobody could do it the whole time. I think we ended up talking to everybody by the end of it, but I was there this afternoon and I'll be there in the morning and then Lonnie will take it off midday tomorrow when I get some other things happening.
Yeah, do you have a little spreadsheet or something that you're making notes on for characteristics that you're probably looking for?
Uh, we, we do. And again, so much of this is both looking at the objective pieces. So some of it's going to be, oh, do they have a license? You know, which of course I do things like that, but you know, how many projects have they completed? How much, you know, what is their, their, their fee structure? What is their capacity? Those are the easy things to quantify and, you know, that's easy to put into a sparring grid. Some of that, that's harder to quantify, but things like, like Will asked a question today on one of the teams. And then it's going to be something we talk about, okay, how do you deal with conflicts between what the engineers are saying versus what the contractor is saying versus what the owner wants? How do we navigate those as a team? How do we work together? Harder to quantify, but equally as important in, in bringing together a team that can work together, what is going to be a complicated bill? And is going to have to pull and push on a variety of things. So there'll be a combination of both. A lot of that, after we've conducted all the interviews, will be discussion with these folks who've been in the room to get that sense. They can be, sleep on it and come back and talk about, so who do we think we like? Objectively, is there a clear winner? Subjectively, is there a clear winner? Are they the same? Make that collective decision and take that piece forward. So there's some art and some science to it, but we also want to be as, you know, frankly, fair as we can be. Particularly given, you know, the public nature of this, the private partnership, but at the same time, you know, we're going to be stuck with these folks for interviews. So we want to make sure we're making the, the right choice now. And that, it's not so you can't, you know, remove a design team and bring them back in later. It gets messy. We don't want to be messy. We want to try and, and put ourselves off on a clean, solid footing to empower. That's where I'm going to. I really appreciate your, your participation in that, because I think having the town side is really something we can bring as strongly to that, that, you know, informing twenty plus years of this site itself. Glad to have you on.
We've already framed the challenge of your question and that kind of thing, based on what your preferences would be.
Yeah, it's, it's relatively conversational because we, you know, again, we're working with these people. So we're allowing them all the opportunity to present, that's due to your fifteen to twenty minute presentation. And during the course of that, we've had some questions just come up. So it's conversational in that sense. But we do have a sort of key list of things we want to get their take on. Some of it comes up just in the presentation, some of it can be very direct. And tell us about your experience with Chappa and my tech projects. Tell us about Dola. And they've all had some level of experience with it, but we want to hear about how they approach it. So and obviously, you know, opportunities for them to ask questions of us too. Not everyone has worked in Carbondale before. Others, well, no one's worked with Art Space. So, you know, they want to know who we are as much as well, so. Sure.
Is Lonnie other questions from the board or those? Anything else from Michael or Amy or Sean or anybody else who came to this part? Okay, I'll put you on the spot, just inviting you into the conversation if you'd like to be. We can call it good there unless you have anything else to share.
No, no, again, just appreciate the opportunity to come and give the update. I think we're here in January. I said we appear to make these, keeping good on my word so far. But we'll, we'll try and, you know, obviously working with Lauren on a regular basis as well. Make a concern after, make sure we're coming for the trustees on a regular basis when there's something to report certainly. And sometimes when there's nothing to report to say, we're working on stuff. So I appreciate the opportunity.
That's good. Just a question of you, Ben? Did you, did that answer enough of the question that you had about sort of overall timeline that we talked about the other day?
It's clear that we're in the selection process for a design firm now. And I think, you know, you said that it, it might seem like it goes by for a little while, but it sounds like this summer, would we be getting into dirt design and shred type work or a little further out?
I think that's, that's the right sort of order of magnitude. It might be towards late summer. Because I, I don't want to speak for the team that hasn't even selected yet, but there's going to have to be that level of, you know, information gathering, we can have a series of reports to them, but they're going to need to do that. And we're also, we want to make the introductions and have them hear directly from some of these stakeholders and talk directly. Get their input and then talk with them on what did they hear? How do we distill that into that point? Can they do that in two months? Probably. Can they do it in two months and put something forward that the public can respond to? I'm not certain. Okay. So we, we don't want to over promise on that, but I definitely think that on this fall or, you know, late summer, we should be in position to be soliciting input and reaction to something more than a piece of dirt.
Thank you all. Good to see you again. See you in the morning. Enjoy your time in Carbondale.
Yes, thank you.
All right, we are a little bit ahead of schedule, but not too far. So hopefully we can just proceed with our planning and zoning commission update. I see if you, P and Z members and, and staff related to that, so come on up and join us. Table here, that's tables here, we can share mics around. And I'm not keeping a great eye on Zoom, but I trust that we'll, we'll know if somebody wants to jump in.
I'll watch for a hand.
Okay. Is Mark here for a particular item? He's not using our laptops.
No, he's, um, he was going to stay for the first two things and he's dropping off.
Okay, welcome, everybody. Thanks for being here. Maybe we can start with introductions in a little while, so we all necessarily know each other. We all have these, so we'll introduce ourselves. But if you can introduce yourselves and we did get an updated packet. So trustees, if you're, have the original packet, there's a, it's not dated when it came through, a little bit later version two that has a nice memo on what you're talking about. So yeah, let's just introduce ourselves first, please, and then we can just kind of talk through the memo.
Jared, what? I just don't know why I should. Your name is fine.
I'm, I'm the chair. And you know, we might have some more people joining us just because they, we were talking about seven o'clock. So we might have more trickle in throughout the night, so.
No problem. So it looks like we can talk a little bit. I mean, you have in your memo accomplishments for the comp plan update adoption and some UDC COTEX adoptions related to short-term rentals. So we appreciate that support. You've got a list of your development project approvals, and then it sounds like our talking points are more around the comp plan and twenty twenty-three priorities. So anywhere you want to start, maybe of that.
Yeah, sure. And I mean, also, when was the last time we had a PMB?
It's a good question. It's been about a year.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I just like, wasn't even sure if we had met to talk about twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty stuff as well. Actually, when I was looking at this list, I was like, oh, we've actually even discussed the last three years.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely had chickens related to the comp plan. So I feel like we had those, but maybe they weren't more general conversation.
Sure, sure, yeah, yeah. It is not, there we go, hey. Yeah, I mean, let's see, so we could talk about some of the projects that we've worked on throughout the last year. You know, for the most part, we had some pretty, pretty big ones. For the most part, I feel like they were, they were smaller than some of the ones, some of the projects that we were seeing back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. So in a way, it was kind of nice that we didn't have any really big project come up just because we were spending so much time on that comprehensive plan. And, you know, as you guys know, we spent a lot of time on the comp plan last year. That's really where we focused a lot of time and energy and, you know, in a way, I think that the entire commission is excited to be done with that. So there was a lot of work and, and yeah, so I mean, that was being where I think we focused our time on was the comprehensive plan for last year. And, you know, as for stuff that's kind of coming up, you know, we really want to, you know, now that we're done with that comprehensive plan update, we really do want to start hopping into some updating of code, which, you know, is already listed here on the priorities. You know, we're talking about trying to figure out more regulations or less regulations on accept ADUs. And also working on the HCC in downtown north zoning. Those are kind of our two, two big priorities for zoning that we want to work on. And then other items on here, there's EV parking requirements. Jared mentioned that we're going to be waiting here to, to talk about EV, EV chargers. And then also kind of a similar thing with the solar ready roofs. It's going to be kind of an RAG coming up shortly as further discussions. So, yeah.
Great. Questions or comments on any of those items?
So we actually had a discussion just last week about the state legislation that's being raised about zoning and agreed that we didn't necessarily support the state taking a stance on those things. But it did come up that some of the recommendations, which may be, might be included in these ADU updates. But some of the recommendations from the state, at least I would be willing to consider in our own, in our own code. And whether that's, you know, expanding, what was it, the limits of unrelated people in a house? Or I don't even know what those are off the top of my head. The other thing that I really liked about the legislation is that it doesn't let, what is it? PUDs and HOAs not allow ADUs? How many acronyms can we put in one sentence? How many acronyms can we put in one sentence? Which, you know, the neighborhood we're in, we're not allowed to have ADUs, but I think everybody, almost. I don't want to say everybody, but it feels like every other house has one.
A lot of people do.
Yeah, and so what, and I know we can't do that, but that was one part of the legislation that we were supporting. And so just wanted to make sure you guys heard that from us that we're, I'm open, at least I'll speak for myself. I'm open to looking at expanding, making it easier for people to have ADUs. And then. The other part was that somebody else has raised is even looking at. Like what's the, what limits somebody from building kind of a boarding house model? And you know, I've got a really good article somebody sent me on that being one of our answers to. Kind of infill affordable housing is letting folks, especially seniors, kind of get together in a home and what does that look like? So. I don't know how expansive you're looking or you know, I hope much as fits, but I think as we look at affordable housing, what is there in our. In our code that could help expand that even more, so I wanted to raise that and we could get more specific. I didn't write down enough ideas ahead of time, but could help feed that discussion as well.
Sure. Yeah, and I mean, I know that a couple, couple of months ago, we were even talking about, you know, trying to figure out how do, how do we allow those ADUs within those. Within those PUDs and how do we open up more ADUs and early potential for more ADUs in town? And you know, that is one of the scary things with that. I wouldn't necessarily say scary, but it's interesting because everybody would have a use that right. To have an ADU, so you know, even over on wheel drive, wheel circle. Those. Those places would be able to have an ADU within their building as well, which it's already. You know, arguably pretty tight over there. So you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of places where it's like, there's some great things in that. Initiative and then there's also some things that I definitely kind of question. I don't really feel like it's fully thoughtful, so. I think we're, and from our discussion, we also talked about that on last Thursday. And we just kind of heard what your guys, Jared, kind of summarized what your opinion is on it and. I feel like it pretty much aligned with everybody who was not at the P and Z meeting as well.
Colin has a question.
Oh, Colin has a question. Colin. You unmute yourself, it looks like.
Well, I can read it because he put it in the chat. Alan says, could the PNC members elaborate on some of the issues they want to address in the twenty twenty three UDC text amendments? Did issues arise through the comp plan, comp plan process? He would love to hear more about what you're thinking.
Yes, there were definitely some items that came up within. From the comp plan update and you know, mainly those were targeted around the downtown area. HCC and then also downtown north. Really just that we need to kind of focus on that, those two, two zones pretty significantly. You know, that being said, there were also some. You know, we've also. Talked about some changes that we would like to see in other zones as well. You know, for example, potentially. Ver- vertical variation within buildings. Kind of like one thirty three, just kind of more concepts, kind of like that, that we really are excited to kind of dive into and. Keep things like that moving forward. But you know, I mean, there's, there's also topics of arcing, there's topics of. Blanket on a couple of. Eighty years, yeah.
Transportation, dressroom movement.
And we're, we're also excited to see transportation management, the, the transportation plan. Once that comes to fruition, I'm excited to see how that kind of affects how we're looking at our zoning and planning as well.
The one thirty three, I think, just in general, all the aspects too at work, pretty hot topic. Sorry. One thirty three, a lot of people have opinions, so we wanted to make sure that we heard a lot of them. But yeah, I think a lot of those. Topics got kind of either pushed off on this. Update, we're looking to hopefully get that started too, so.
It was not in scope, the update, so that's why I wondered if it was permitted. We heard, we heard some broad comments. And concerns which were valid, but you couldn't dive too deep as many of you know, it was not in that scope.
Yeah, it's kind of a tricky spot because with our comp plan update, that was definitely. You know, that was, that was the activity, that was the action in town was everything on one thirty three, so that's what everybody's attention was at, and here we were asking them to. Now, like, let's talk about this, let's talk about this whole utility space back here. And so I think because of that, people were a little distracted from what we actually wanted to focus on. So we heard a lot of feedback on items like one thirty three and. At the same time, you know, we are nervous going forward with doing any update because. The outreach that we did for that comp plan was not focused on that. So you know, the feedback that we, we definitely heard a lot of feedback on it, but at the same time, that data wasn't really being collected because that wasn't really within our scope. So it was kind of a tricky situation there. And it kind of puts us in a tricky situation too for, you know, making any sort of. Code updates for those zones just because we don't really have a public's input on it. So we don't want to just jump in there and be like, oh yeah, we're going to rewrite all this, so.
We have had some discussions, however, on looking at those zone districts and. Reidentifying, reorganizing the way that we look at zone districts along one thirty three. I think the mosaic, if you will, down that corridor. And I'm blanking on kind of future land use designations for it. But it isn't really fitting anymore. There's some. Help me here, Jay. Yeah, thank you. The way we, I think, at one point envisioned those districts and the. Associated kind of building forms and connections. We've outgrown that. And I think our community did raise some, I think, thoughtful concerns. Again, generally about pedestrian safety, connections and just fluid movement in that. That highway corridor area, not only how we move, but also how it will look and how it will evolve with us as a community in the coming years. Which I thought were, I, I received them, I thought they were appropriate comments, very general preliminary, but good for us. So that's interesting. I feel like, you know, there's what's in the. Memo here as far as priorities, which we talked about ADUs, you look into downtown, solar stuff, EV stuff. But then you're bringing up a, a big issue that's not in these priorities and you acknowledge that it wasn't in the scope of our last. Comp plan update, so what does the commission feel are our next steps on addresses in that? Along one thirty three specifically.
Right, and I think that's, that's part of our struggle with the comprehensive plan was, you know, we wanted it to encompass. Kind of everything and I, and you know, as we presented it to you guys, is that we want to push for an updated comp plan. A full rewrite of a comp plan as soon as possible, just because we don't feel like. The community input in those areas that aren't being, that weren't talked about in the last update were. You know, supportive of developing the zoning for those areas. Or the planning, so.
And so rather than another, like, just focus on that corridor kind of approach, you'd say we need a full rewrite, like. ASAP. I don't know, I mean, I guess. You know, again, noting the quality response we got and hoping that we're perhaps past engagement fatigue. And COVID fatigue to some degree, maybe there's opportunity in the coming year or so. To, to look at the one thirty three corridor and you know, kind of. Hesitate to say in a vacuum or in a silo, but with somewhat of, you know, constrained edges to that. Knowing that there are things coming down the line, you know, talks of roundabouts, talks of, you know, additional development. That could be done in a, in a way where we do have focused. Kind of process around that. I think it could then assist the transportation master plan and then it could assist the rewrite. Almost like front loading a little bit in that area. And I'm just, this is just my own opinions. I mean, we've not discussed this as a commission, but it's just a, just a creative kind of approach. Given its value and function to us as a community and its, well, its increasing option.
And I, I think we recognize that a full rewrite is kind of a big ask. And it's also a big ask for the community too. And so, you know. One thirty three, I think it is still a pretty hot subject. In Carbondale, I mean, if you go onto our Carbondale Colorado page on Facebook, it's what everybody's ranting about. And so I think that if we were to have a discussion that was focused on one thirty three, I think. It would, there'd be a lot more engagement and focus on that subject. As opposed to kind of this previous update that we were working on with regards to those areas, so.
I think maybe I just, I, I, I'd be curious just to understand how we as a community envision that corridor. Is it this auto centric idea? I mean, to a degree, it has to convey vehicles, passenger commercial otherwise. But what degree do we as a community? Want crossings? And what do those, what do those crossings look like? How do we get from one side there safely? I think anecdotally, we heard a lot during the comp plan where there was just kind of like. You know, like jokes around, you can pretty much, you'd say, everywhere in Carbondale. Except the grocery store. That's the one place that there's kind of that boundary there where kids can't go or, you know, it's, it's a little bit harder to walk and travel bicycle. I think it's a valid comment, so what does that look like? To our community and then how do they respond in a way that helps us kind of focus in a little bit? So that maybe even the lift of the transportation master plan becomes a little lighter or at least more important.
I think your comments play particularly into where we are with transportation plan, mobility plan. I think that seems to be the right space, spot to start from anyway, is building the connections and working on that safety. Pedestrian and vehicle safety aspect of one thirty three is a good place to start and then. But I know that the bike pet commission has been very eager to include the PNC. As they do that and think about what are the zoning implications of. Or the interaction between zoning and streetscape or. Connections and things like that, so I think. It might be good at some point to have a joint meeting or something like that in the process of. Depending on what the consultant ends up wanting to, how they want to run that process, but. It definitely feels like one thirty three is a, is yes, a constant point of interest from everybody and. We do have, you know, preliminary ideas about this roundabout out there, what would be able to us beyond that and. I know that going back to the nineties, people have. There have been studies, citizen led studies on the. On. Corridor that have. Have argued for making it more of a street like, you know. Feeling akin to like Aspen's main street or something as opposed to. More of a highway field, so. But those have always been. It hasn't been reality, so. I think, I think definitely just being involved in that plan would be good, useful for your developments.
Yeah, a couple of things. I know, I might, that would help. Couple of things. I think over the last eight, ten years, most of the development in town has been on one thirty three. And that was the board's response to. What we were told, where people wanted development. They didn't want to change Main Street. They didn't want to change historic core. Has it been too much? Everyone has different opinions on that. We got the one roundabout, a lot of people don't like that. This board had envisioned and has made efforts over the last five years or more. Wherever we could get a right of way. Or something, to prepare for the day in the future, because we know where it's coming. But we're going to need a second roundabout. With the help. Of CAFD and I believe it was the state, we have. One pedestrian crossing, which is not perfect. By Garcia's. Okay, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we are looking into a second one. Second pedestrian crossing.
We're looking into enhancing the one at Calum.
Okay, and it can use enhancing. One thirty three is the main corridor. You know, it's a transportation hub. It's how you get to the hospital, it's how you get, by a department gets anywhere. It's how the trucks get to the only grocery store and pharmacy in town. So. We can't recreate it in Main Street or require more vision than I have. But I think going forward. We can try to limit what goes on there. And I'll just speak personally, the last thing I want to see is still another storage center in town. Okay, with no housing. And it's just. I don't think we need that. I can see small retail. I could see small retail, maybe apartments, maybe affordable housing on top. Like a two story. But. That's just my opinion and thank you, because you guys have the same job we do. No matter what you do, half the time it's going to age. So. It's true.
Colin Laird, trustee Laird, he's back, he's taking care of his family right now and his comment on there is a. Full read of the comp, full rewrite of the comp plan is tough, typically out of one thirty three zoning update, maybe a logical outcome of the access mobility plan. I think that's kind of where Chris was going and my thoughts as well, so it does seem like we're, we're kind of teed up. I do heard a need for planning in a zone that was left out, I don't mean strict zone, but a region of town that was left out of the last big planning process. I remember talking to Janet about that as we were going through that process, kind of in the early days and saying, you know, what are we going to do if we need to add something? And she said, you can always do a comp plan update, like an amendment, you can take out a part, and I, I understand that. It's hard to go back into that process because it felt like we were limited this time and then there was this other thing and we don't want that to happen again. But I'd say for now, this is a really good conversation. We're all thinking about what's next with one thirty three. And hopefully we'll get some good input and guidance. The, the crossings will be a major focus of this mobility plan. So we budgeted for that, RFPs are in, we're selecting the firm for that right now, bike pet trails and, and Chris is our liaison there. Is intimately involved in that work, so we're going to have a big public outreach process and really talk about mobility across the highway corridor. And then what struck me, Nicholas, about what you said is that if the future land use map, which is still from twenty thirteen. I remember that very well and you know that, Chris, it says auto urban on the north side and then it says new urban sort of in the roundabout area. Not very comfortable with that auto urban designation either. It's like, what does that even mean?
We're in newer, I mean, yeah, new urbanism is, right, I refer it as something very, very different than a highway.
Yeah, yeah, so maybe those, I think that gives a rationale for a, you know, a comp plan update potentially. Or a comp plan amendment that looks at that and looks at the future land use designations, you know, that might be a twenty twenty four. Thing, something like that. Any other thoughts on that topic before we kind of look at a couple of other things in the memo?
I mean, only a personal one and is, you know, a, a personal interest in that, I don't know if Chris or, you know, if he can have a representative to assist with that as well. But would, would personally love to be part of that process, it's my professional purpose. So and just to be able to be in it and to, you know, be engaged in that level would be an honor and really appreciated if that's. That's kosher, if that's functional.
Do you mean part of the mobility plan? I think there's going to be a lot of outreach, I mean, it sounds like Chris is saying that. Bike pet trails is sort of the lead group on that, just like you all are the lead group on comp plan update. It's kind of there, baby, but they're going to include all the different commissions and they have those specific notes.
Yeah, and I imagine there might be a wider shred of some kind, you know, it's maybe akin to the thing our space is starting out similarly.
Well, I would think you could be a liaison, you know, to be perfect for. To have somebody from P and Z at those meetings like you just said, and if you're willing to, you know, attend those meetings and maybe. Well, that could be a logical connection. But you have to bring your daughter.
I mean, she is, she is the power plant. She, she, they whispering, say this next. Bring to the operation.
Any other thoughts before we talk about a couple of others, other items, just about the one thirty three and the comp plan? I think we're getting some of the, I appreciate the kind of recap, you know, and we need to go into any of that in more depth we can if we want to, but I think we're familiar with the fact that. But I think we're familiar with the fact that that was an imperfect process. Um, but it was a process and, and it was concluded and it's given us, I think, some pretty good direction on quite a few things that we can now take action. So.
Imperfect is so really exciting for our little community. You know, to end on a positive note, you know.
On the HCC zoning, you know, thing, has there been any review, been a discussion with the Historic Preservation Commission all about? Because there was some agitation from them at the end of last year, desiring more review essentially, right?
Uh, Nick serves on both, right?
Well, currently HCC is an advisory. We've heard from, we've heard from the public that, you, we've heard from the public that um, perhaps it's time, uh, would be timely, especially given a one thirty-three corridor discussion that means we'd be more focused. Uh, not only for development and potentially expansion and development rights, but also just more focus. Now maybe.
Um, so was your question, Chris, about whether the Planning and Zoning Commission has been in touch with the Preservation Commission about how to go about those?
Yeah, it, it sounds like, I mean, I've heard both sides of the issue. It sounds like there's some, some restrictions, potentially hamstringing development in that, in that zoning. If we are unleashing the potential of new development in that desk, in that district, are we adequately protecting our historical resources in this? Um, it's just, I mean, thing, because oftentimes, you know, these infill things, we envision them taking place in the worst lot on the, on the town or whatever and and then uh, and then somebody tears down visors or something and you say, oh, well, we didn't actually have any right to stop them. So. That was their right and everyone would be absolutely enraged. So.
I think that's a valid concern to, to somehow preserve and protect the historic fabric of the HCC, but ultimately uh, as far as the HCC is concerned, I believe it's the Historic Preservation Commission's um, opinion that the best way to protect the HCC is to promote vitality. Um, and, and if we can do that by incentivizing development and promoting development rights or expanding development rights, that that might be one step in the right direction.
Um, but yes, we have, we have not had any discussions with HPC uh, to this, to this date, but at the same time, we've heard it kind of being talked about for a while and we would, we would definitely, I honestly, I'd be, I'd be excited to have that conversation. Like, I do think that I have an agreement with Nick on that, that it's something that they should have more power on. Um, but you know, I'm not really sure if we're the venue that like, is that, is, would that be something that uh, the board of trustees would be awarding you? Would be giving HPC or is that something that we coordinate with HPC on and then bring it to board of trustees as firms?
I don't know what that would look like, but I think um, the, the idea that we should coordinate zone text amendment changes in the downtown core with historic preservation, maybe strengthening our historic preservation ordinance, um, makes a lot of sense. Yeah. And maybe it's um, you know, I'm also imagining us kind of maybe starting together, like maybe there's, I'm looking at Jared, just thinking about planning a, a process. Maybe when we get to that, maybe we have an initial public meeting where Historic Preservation Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, Board of Trustees and the public, we're all there to kind of set the, the tone. And then we are each going to do different parts of that work and then it's, you know, your, your work will come to us eventually. So that people are kind of aware of like, there's a, there's a big process happening here and we're going to look at these things at once.
Make a information grab for sure. Yeah.
And I think we're anticipating that the Town Center project, which was our update right before you tonight, um, it'll really give us an opportunity to, to see the impacts on a specific project where we're behind the curtain, right? And it's not just being brought to us at the end. Um, the impacts of the, the parking requirements, the, the height line and the um, commercial frontage, those seem to be the things that came out of the complan process to look at. Um, and we said to our um, partner, um, art space that we're open to, you know, moving as own text amendment through with that project. So it's not an exemption for that project or a baroness. It's something that we're saying, okay, you see the, the value here, we're going to do this for the whole zone at once. Yeah. So. Um, I'd rather get ahead of it so that it doesn't hold that project up, quite honestly, but um, if we can't get ahead of it, then it might come up.
Um, just a question. Um, the HCC, you can only request owners not to destroy besides buildings of historical significance to town.
Well, the HCC's role in review is advisory only. Uh, it's really a informal discussion. Um, if, if, if a property owner in the HCC's own district, district is um, you know, they, you know, is interested in meeting with us, they, they can, we provide input uh, as we see fit. Um, and, and then, and then it stops with that. They can take our advice or, or not.
Okay, so if they're receptive, they could do something like, that's the interior, they'll keep the exterior the same?
The interior of the buildings along the HC are beyond our purview. So we only have um, technically the, the ability to uh, to comment on the exterior.
Okay, but and if they wanted to just say, I'm taking it down and I'm going to put up whatever the code allows me. There's nothing we can really do. Is that correct?
Yes, that is true. Um, within the confines of other, of, of other, other authorities, but yes.
Okay, disappointing, but just from the show understood it.
Well, I think that's the kind of thing that a lot of people have been clamoring for change around for a long time and um, we could certainly entertain that. I think along with this idea, and that's a, a give and a take, right? Like, we're gonna maybe allow development with less restrictions on it, whether that's around parking or height or commercial frontage. And at the same time, we want to put in place some restrictions that would protect those, those key lots. Um, so, or those key structures in downtown. Um, so I think that that could be a really good kind of compromise to, to work through over the next months.
Um, Janet and I were at this um, a couple of years before she um, left and one of the things we were noting was the outdated nature of the current design guidelines for our historic preservation um, scenario downtown. And another way to consider putting more teeth into that, that portion of our policy or process is to revisit that set of design guidelines. Um, there's already a framework there, there's already a basis that is associated and contextually appropriate. Um, it is that, you know, very far out of date. Um, but it would give, you know, a consultant at least, I guess, a spine to begin with, um, as well as all the, the new complan background that we have. It could actually even be dovetailed in a way where the one, they really go back and forth. You know, there's data gained from some sort of, you know, DG target update that could inform and then be informed by the complan process. Um, and as part of that, usually uh, the teeth or the policy on a their preservation policies are a front end of the document, which usually they're broken down to like a, a series of five levels. The least being where we're at now, where like the level one of five is, is generally the, the, the sharpest teeth, the most policy. And it would really require each future developer to, but through a full process where the H, where, and the, the HPC, sorry, um, would have a smudge stronger purview and basically a go-no-go scenario at that point, that they could send up to you as the board. Um, so maybe that's, that's another way to consider it is through that vehicle. Um, and I know design guidelines aren't, and we've kind of moved away from them as a community over the years. But that tool could also be considered, sorry to go backwards, but along one thirty-three as a kind of a bolt-on or a, a parallel tool um, in addition to what we currently have.
I, I agree with Nick. I, I think that is, that, that's worth bringing up. Um, and I do think that the purview of the Historic Preservation Commission traditionally and technically is preservation of buildings. Um, but I think it's also important to, again, reiterate the importance of preservation of the vitality of the historic commercial core as a, as a core value, um, perhaps even above beyond the preservation of buildings. Um, that we have a very humble history here in Carbondale, um, that we want to preserve that story of a humble history. Um, but really, you know, pedestrian scale, um, of, you know, and preservation of the vitality of the public realm, which is Main Street as opposed to one thirty-three, um, is, is, is as much a focus as the preservation of buildings. Um, and we don't want to lose sight of that. That we might, and in fact, sacrifice the preservation of the vitality of the historic core in trying to preserve the history of building itself. We don't want to sacrifice one for the other. Am I making many?
Yeah, I would just like guidelines would be very helpful. Guidelines are context and structure sensitive. So just to the exact point, I mean, it wouldn't just be the block, the, the block and the fabric.
Um, yeah, and development rights can play right into that conversation. Um, some people get nervous about the preservation of buildings, hamstringing the the development rights of homeowners or sorry, the owners, the, the building owners and property owners in that area. Um, it's a, it's a delicate dance.
Yeah, very, very, absolutely. Well, there's certainly lots of details we could get into, but I think that's, that's the job that's ahead, right? Is I think this process of working with, that I just like the discussion of kind of marrying historic preservation work in the downtown or with code amendments and um, maybe being less restrictive in some ways and more restrictive than others um, to end up with. And I really like, uh, Nick, your points about they, preserving the vitality is just as important as preserving buildings. So. Um, any other thoughts on that topic? And I think part of the purpose of these check-ins is to see, are we kind of on the same page? Do we support where you're heading? And it's sounding like we are and do. Um, on that, as far as the, the ADU stuff, you know, we talked a little bit about this kind of working its way through the state legislature. The legislature is out in six weeks, so that bill's either going to pass or fail um, before you have like two more meetings or something. Um, so that's going to be really quick. Um, I'd recommend that we keep thinking about ADUs, but that we see what gets through the state legislation, because if that gets through um, even remotely intact in the ADU section, um, it's gonna pull that rug right out from under us and, and have it probably some of the things we would have done anyway and probably some other things we might not have done. Um, so we'll, we'll see where that ends up.
And with that, Carbondale?
That's the, that's like the one section that impacts, we're in the, there was a column in Colorado Municipal League, a table. It was in our last packet. If you want to look at it, it's a really good um, thing. It's on the website uh, for last week's packet. Um, they put a table together and we're in the far right column and almost nothing affects us because we're not a resort oriented. Right, rural municipality. Um, but the ADU section affects it a lot. Okay.
It uses unrelated versus basically.
Okay, so occupancy limits, which I remember when we put those into effect and I haven't heard about them much since then. So, um, if that's an issue, we can certainly address that too. But it, it'll be interesting to see when that bill, um, where that bill ends up. And if any of it makes it through, if all of it or if none of it makes it through and, um, you know, place your bets, who knows? Um, but it, it might give us some things to collectively kind of pick off and say, those are really good ideas. Like, we can do those ourselves and then we can make them better by saying like, a lot of our concerns were, um, if you just open the floodgates on density, but you don't have anything in place to make sure that density is de-restricted and affordable, then it may not actually address the problem. So we could say open the floodgates, but you got to be restricted or something like that. So we could, we could look at that.
That kind of goes to the last, one last thing. I thought maybe you might, might want to kick around is we had a housing discussion and one point of discussion was, is our inclusionary zoning uh, level appropriate? Um, you know, there've been ideas as radical as flipping the, flipping the percentage entirely, but what is it? Are you going to have to thirty percent of you changing that in some way? Um, I think that's probably something PNC would want to weigh in on and think about. Because we've sort of thought about it, but we haven't gotten beyond it just being an, an idea basically. Um, there's a whole realm of policy questions around housing that we could get into as well at some point. I feel like I've, I've heard that uh, topic come up a couple of times throughout our meetings and it's definitely been an idea. Um, that being said, we haven't really had an in-depth discussion about it yet. I think that once we start diving into these uh, code amendments is hopefully when we kind of spend a little more, a bit more time focusing on that. But, you know, that's, that's it's a hard decision to make. I'm, I'm not even sure if I feel comfortable in a way making those decisions because I can be the difference between something being budgetable or not, you know? And so. Well, that's a whole discussion balance for sure. Yeah, and I think it's worth having a wider, doesn't just be us having the discussion, I think. Contending with those economic realities or, or our, you know, desire for better outcome, you know, with building, building nothing or building something.
And I think process wise, and then Erica's got an idea is Colin has been our leader on our housing plan this year and we've got a pretty um, defined kind of timeline on there and, and you're right that that's, that's on there, but it's a little down the line. So maybe we'll, we'll look at that soon and then we'll get some direction. Like, if we want PNC to start that discussion or if we want to start that discussion and refer it to PNC, but it's definitely good to have it on the radar. You know, we're at twenty percent of um, of development with five or more units, I believe it is. And we've talked about even a minor change like around a twenty-five percent and then it's four or more, you know, how much more would that generate? Um, but it's some staff time required and things like that. So it's kind of intentional way to move and go down there.
Well, I'm, I was just gonna add, I wouldn't want you guys to feel like you have to tackle that on your own.
Right.
Because I think that would be something that we could do even, you know, a really robust joint outreach meeting together or something. Um, and obviously in Colin, and so that, that, I was going to bring up that exactly, is he's been doing a lot of research as well and kind of leading us in that. So, um, and then we could gather that input and all hear it together before we throw something out there and then hear feedback. So, we could make that one slightly more fun. Um, yeah, and so I just, but I think that could be a whole separate and it might not even be just that percentage. There's all, there's other affordable housing um, components that we could discuss or we could revisit or get together again um, that might be able to be included in our codes. So, I don't want you to feel like we're just throwing you to the wall.
Not to the bus.
Um, I'm watching our time and we're right about at it, but um, were there any other items that, you know, we didn't get to here or that you wanted kind of feedback or guidance or check-in on like, are we on the same page? Because I think it's important.
I mean, I think, I think that was just going to be one of my main questions was if uh, if you guys are comfortable with how we've been doing things, is there anything that you guys would like to see us do differently? Um, but I mean, for the most part, it seems like we're in similar alignment, but positions on everything. But I, if there's anything that you think that we could do to be, to be more aligned with board of trustees, then very much appreciated.
I mean, I think one indicator of that is how often do you spend a lot of time on something and then we go the opposite direction? And I think that, I don't think we went the opposite direction. I can't even remember what it was, but it was, I think, one in my recent memory where you disagreed and that, that's healthy too, right? We shouldn't be a hundred percent. Um, but uh, in general, I think it's a very good sign that um, I remember when I was on PNC being very frustrated by the disconnect I felt where we would spend a lot of time on something and then the board of trustees would sort of start back at the ground level and renegotiate all the points. And we give things pretty, pretty quick uh, attention because we trust your work so much. Um, we move something through in thirty minutes to an hour, one public hearing that you spent weeks on as staff, staff and the applicant has spent months or, or years on. I think that's a pretty good sign, but I think that, if anybody has other thoughts or ideas um, on kind of our alignment and the work that's being done or any other.
Um, I mean, I would just add to that, that I appreciate, uh, you know, reading the minutes from your meetings because then it's almost like, okay, I don't have to ask that question. Or, I mean, you guys know a lot more about development than I do. So I'd be like, that's a great question. I'm so glad they asked that. So I, I haven't read like minutes from a meeting where I've questioned um, how you guys are approaching something. I know it's only the minutes, but um, and so I've been, I felt really confident and worked it, um, and grateful in the work that you guys do.
To, to go to your point, um, Mr. Mayor, uh, the, there's a, not too few for us to learn. The, there's a, not to be for us to learn about the lesson on the, the one one eighty that, that the board did hand back to PNC. What did, what would you have, how would you? Change our lens on that? What can we learn?
I can't even remember what project it was.
It was, it was the, the mayor wanted shop on Main Street that was facing the wrong way.
Yeah, they fixed some things. I think that was the main thing. They, they did make that front insurance. Like you gave them really good feedback and. They fixed some of those things because they knew that we were going to reject it again if they didn't. So they fixed the front entrance. I can't remember what else it was. We had some, I mean, I remember Chris had some issues with that one. Yeah, I don't know if there's anything that. Okay, that I would recommend being really different about that process.
Sure, got it. It was, it was a good opportunity. We, we were all pretty clear on that. And then did it come back? I don't, I don't think it was as clear what happened. In the interim, you know, why, why it went through the board, we were just weird. It crossed me personally. I was like, wow. It was such a hot mess. But I, but I guess yes, it did. They did, it was done some work to make it, not set up.
But I think that was it. So I remember it being like. The three reasons. That you guys have voted against it, they have fixed or changed. So that it felt like, okay, well, I think PNC maybe would have voted differently if these things had been in place in the first, in the first place.
Good.
As far as like going forward and making it just crystal clear for us in findings and minutes. Restating like for the record, we find that those kinds of things, especially when you're going to recommend denial. So that we can really keep it like that's, that's what we're going off of at that point. So that we're not arbitrary or.
Yeah, cause we did, we did have some concerns that were just in regards to that. Kind of that whole. Block, I suppose. We just didn't really feel like it integrated with. The, the vision of that entire street right there. And I think that's kind of where we all really got caught up on it. Cause we also were talking about, you know, what would the implications be if we were to. Require this entire area to rezone to a new zone district because it was also an old zone district. And so we had a couple of issues. In there that I don't know, maybe they didn't get away to you guys, or if it just.
Yeah, I think what happened was there was a two buckets of perspectives. One that was very black and white objectively associated with the code. Which is where we have their purview. And one that maybe we weren't putting a toe in water that was beyond our purview, just understanding the town, having opinions and passions about our town. Collectively as a commission where we began to. Push outside of our, or flex a little bit. And I think that's kind of where Jay, we, you know, that, that second part that you're talking about, it was really like. Is the overall appropriateness? Is there a fit and contextual appropriateness? To this block and way this is being kind of fit in. And are we hamstringing now kind of this, this anchor? You know, on our, on our roundabout with this develop. And I think it's. I remember perfectly now it's kind of what we were getting into a little bit.
Yeah, and that jogs my memory as well, but ultimately I believe they didn't ask for a rezoning, right? They, they did it under existing zoning, right? We had to have really specific findings that they weren't meeting because we couldn't say, because we want to redevelop that whole area one day. We're not going to let you do what you do under existing zone. So we didn't have quite the latitude that maybe. If there's nothing else, we can end it there. Just with Colin put it in the chat, but I think we would all share his sentiments of just appreciation for your work. We know it's, it's a hot seat to be in sometimes. You have a lot of authority. You have a lot of direction. You're giving a lot of direction on the town's future. I mean, I think take that very seriously and it's a. It's a volunteer role. It's, it's the biggest. Volunteer role that I think we have of all upwards and commissions. And so we really appreciate all of your service and professionalism and everything you bring to it. So thank you. All right, our environmental board update. Hello, Hannah.
Hi there.
You can come, why this is, this is great. This is a, a simple work session, so. We are happy to have you here. We appreciate the memo. Maybe you can both introduce yourselves to us. I guess anybody doesn't know you.
Totally, totally.
Get started for everyone.
Yeah, I mean, the Tony has her whole entourage. I don't talk about this little last minute, so I did the best to give an update, but this is Dina. Who, so I'm Hannah, the Eboard Chair. And one of our efforts that we've been working on is a subcommittee focused on landscape and ecology. Which we are calling an initiative, they're calling the Friendly Carbondale. And Dina has been a big part of that. And will even use yourself more than that. Yeah, we're just looking at ways that we could. Transform public habitat landscapes in Carbondale for some more water wise and bio efforts. Methods. And honing on turf replacement, which there's been quite a lot of effort statewide on this. And water wise planting is really, it's not even the future of the West. It's now and the West and it's. Long overdue, so. We'd like to.
No, that's okay. We'd like to tap into that with. Beauty and positivity through native and regionally adapted plants.
Great. Well, I, I'll just go, I just want to kind of, I'll work through this memo that I put together. You can start there and then we can kind of come back to talking about the, the be friendly. Effort. And then certainly if there are other things kind of along the way, it'd be great to just have this be a discussion. First off too, I want to say that we are all acknowledging from the Eboard that Mark. Omira is retiring and we appreciate his. Being our liaison and, you know, staff representative and it's been really great to work with Mark. So. Wrote him a letter last night at the Eboard meeting and presented that to him, but we are. Acknowledging and appreciating Mark. I, I wanted to just kind of give an update. I think it's helpful to just. Have a part of the conversation be where have we, since we last spoke and what's happened. And. The last, so kind of summarizing that would be. Our relationship and working with Clear has been something that we're really trying to. You know, dig into and kind of have the best. Dynamic that we can. A part of that has been formalizing or just putting into writing what that looked like between the Eboard and Clear, what our roles are between. Each other and then also for the Board of Trustees, that's in the packet. That's in the packet here. That's something that's been a conversation between. Myself and, and Alice and Zubayka, who's our. Representative, but that has been. A positive. A positive. Situation to just. Really clarify roles and responsibilities and also figure out how we can be. Working. Working clearly together. An output of that, but I think has been really positive and was a part of the Board of Trustees meeting last week with the Go EV City. And that's something that we had been working on for a while and met with Lauren and Mark and. Kevin and a lot of staff on, on talking about the. The Go EV City really as an EV first policy. The intent for that now that that's, that that was approved is to. Identify and working with Martine from Clear, identify what that means in terms of additional funding sources that we can tap into. And then also thinking about. Charging. An electric infrastructure and identify on that. What that could look like for Carbondale. We're also aware of with the transportation master plan that electrification is not specifically the focus of that master plan, but we're thinking about that as also a. Vehicle. Fun intended to be able to, you know, think about getting electrification on the radar from a, from an EV standpoint within mobility. And then I would say our, yeah, the landscape ecology team that, that Dina has been a really active part of, that has been. A, a big focus of our subcommittees of looking at. What's happening both on a, what's happening here in the Rockford Valley, what's happening on a state level? What does that mean for Carbondale? The be friendly initiative really has taken, and that's also in the packet here. Is a kind of threefold approach. One is on the residential resources, which is really an education. Component. And at Dandelion Day, we're doing our official kind of launch as a. Initiative and bringing back learning tent to have a series of speakers that are focused on different efforts around. Be friendly. We've got a lot of resources from CSU Extension and a wide variety of other partners that we've. Identified people and pollinators that were wild ones. Variety of, of different efforts are intended certainly not to reinvent the wheel on this, but really rather collective resources. And make that available. A big piece to kind of note is that a lot of the resources that are statewide are really focused on the front range. And so while there's a lot of efforts around. Programs to give out free plants and think about different planting plans and even just have nurseries that have a lot of these native plants, a lot of that's on the front range. So. For us, that's been thinking about how do we. You know, kind of work and think about these resources here. The CSU Extension in Grand Junction is helpful and some of the new. Kind of people who are a part of CSU Extension and the Master Program. Have been. Working with us on collecting these resources, but that's, that's certainly an effort of just like, how can this be, how can we kind of think about this from the Western slope? And then the second part of that is around. Policy and landscape standards, which that discussion, there's a subgroup of, of the be friendly folks who are thinking about. What are the current landscape related standards that are within the UDC? It's not that much, but kind of what's in there? What, what were the. Action plans and kind of. Aspects around landscape that was in the comp plan implementation matrix of which there's a fair amount. And then also looking at references for other. Adjacent communities on the springs, for example, that's adopted. Zurich and low water standards, new plantless, they're working on a turf replacement. Incentive program. So kind of sourcing from, there's also a solid public works manual that's been quite. Impressive. So that, that group is really working on. And what, where are we in terms of landscape codes and where could that be? I'll also say that that's been in discussion with Carl and we had, we spoke with the tree board too, to just. You know, kind of move them in. So it certainly has been a very. There's been a lot of stakeholder engagement kind of throughout this process. So we're certainly not working in there. And then the third aspect is around demonstration. And. You know, kind of way back in the fall, a lot of the, the conversation around demonstration was. With a, a very high level of awareness of demonstration projects in town that have not gone well. And so a lot of that was really looking at and identifying. Kind of what, what were some of the challenges? Why, why was that an issue? And our focus has really been on. Maintenance and also has been on partnership with town staff and town maintenance staff. So we had a really productive meeting with. Eric and with Carl and with Russell in, at the beginning of March, just sharing. Kind of what, what we're up to, getting feedback from them. That was really, that was really productive. We're partnering with Carl and his adopted garden program and. Our intent really is to have this program be as, or our efforts. Work in partnership with, with town and, and. You know, identify how our efforts can support what, what town staff is already doing. So we're, we're planning to adopt one of the gardens that's in Carl's program and then have a variety of other. Kind of projects that are on Carl's radar in terms of. Public gardens that are needing their. Landscape design or, or different efforts and, and working with him on that. We would like to continue to grow that and start kind of slow with these landscape. Landscapes that are identified as being a part of the adopted garden program, then kind of build momentum through that. So that's a big, been, been our effort on the be friendly side. And. Then in terms of Dandelion Day. You know, you've seen a lot of the different. Organizers and people involved with Dandelion Day over the last few, few meetings, but. That's been going, we're really excited for that. And. From the Eboard standpoint, we're organizing the learning tent. And really looking forward to bringing back that. Aspect of the, the real educational focus for, for Dandelion Day. So before I go to the next piece, maybe I'll just stop there and see if there's any. Kind of comments or thoughts on. The kind of what we've been up to section.
That's great. That's a, that's a lot. For a really clear. Questions about.
Well, I'm really excited about this be friendly component of the board this week. Over the years, I'll go through my email and find it. So you have their contact information. You know, we hear from different members of the public who are like, can you guys make this happen? Can you do, uh? We need to do this landscaping thing and we haven't had. The staff to just direct and say, go create this program, go research it and figure it out. And it wasn't a priority of the Eboard prior and they were busy doing other things. I just think it's. That our community is really interested right now in this topic. I think they have been for a very long time. And so I think I'm really excited. That Dina here on the Eboard, that's awesome. Good to see you. And, and but just, I think this is an exciting and some, something the community is going to, could get really behind. And so we appreciate all this work that you're putting into it.
And we're just giving it a home, all those ideas a home basically and keeping it within the town, like by being a part of the environmental board. It's kind of exciting. Yeah. Yeah. And I would say certainly there's been efforts in the past. So this is, we're not, you know, we're, we're building on the shoulders of a lot of other folks who have been. Working on these different landscape efforts. Over the past year or so, and many. There's a lot of, we're kind of our webs of connection and people we've been talking to quite wide. So. We're glad I think a home is the right way to call it. Marty.
Yeah. Thing I like is that this seems really collaborative. That you're working with Colin, Tanor, Bruce, with the tree board, with Eric and Parks and Rec. And with the Eboard, so that all of you are working together towards a common goal.
Yeah, the fragmentation, I think some issues in the past are challenges that have been the fragmentation, like so these ideas not all being. Talked about together and then there, you know, the holes, then we see them in the landscape.
Right, no, Tanor, Bruce, as well. Parks and Rec as well. Public as well and Eboard as well. I mean, I really love Carlos' name with the doctor going, I think that's great all the way around. Now, if you guys take me in. And he's in favor of this, I know. Let's get native plants. Let's, you know. Why try to put something in there that isn't from this area and isn't going to thrive here? So hats off, Danny. He does have done a great job.
Yeah, I would agree with all that. And I think I love your like seven year plan, you know, you've at least just thought of, sure that'll change, but you've thought about, we can't do it all at once. I would just encourage you as, as this builds to really think about. How do we make it sustainable within existing structures? So, you know, we're always thinking about that, that like, we all know that we're temporary holders of these seats. And, and you won't all be on Eboard forever. So even if another group comes into these seats and those seats staff. We might not have the same level of passion for it. I, I, I can see that you're thinking structurally like that. And that's what I think has been lacking in some of those past efforts. It's been very like, let's take action right here, right now.
And you're going.
Fun part is putting the plants in the ground. The hard part is thinking about what's going to be happening five years from now. How do we untow that? Yeah, totally.
Is there support that you need from us or any guidance on that right now? You've heard support and I see that you've got a potential like. Grant proposal to, I know that there's that state. Initiative and you put something about that in there and maybe asking for eight thousand dollars or the same, that's like in matching funds or something from us.
Yeah, we can, let's, yeah, do you want to take that? Just talking specifically about the house build?
Yeah, so the twenty twenty-two house bill around turf replacement is a one-time matching grant up to twenty-five thousand dollars. And that can either be converting. High water areas in town landscapes or businesses or. Governments. Land, not for residents, but you could also see it from the, or take that money and follow it into creating an incentive. Waterwise and planting incentive program where there is one out on Fort Collins. Just the Fort Collins. Zerescape incentive plan where residents can fill out an application and apply and show their. Planting plans and they can get approved to get money.
planting plans and they can get approved to get money from the town to then make those um changes. So something that this deadline is due in July and it's something we want to apply for and rather than digging up more um land in town. We think it would be fruitful to make an uh zero escape or water wise incentive program for residents to be able to apply for and then we parcel out the money. So um, yeah, if we had sixteen thousand dollars, that's, that's a number of people who could be making a transformation to their yards. And I think that the community is interested in that.
Yeah, I mean, already even without officially being kind of publicly launched, we've had numerous people saying, hey, you know, can you come in with my HFA? You want to talk about doing this and how can we make this happen?
Yeah, without all the the support, it's, it can be easy if you do it right, um, but the success is um probably ninety percent in your site preparation and your planning. Um, so for be friendly to be able to um, support them is our aim.
So that's one where we have to just think really hard about how would that be sustained, right? Like who would take those applications and go with processing? Is it a staff component or is it the the board? So I just, I look forward to hearing next steps on that, but also be mindful, you know, staffing patients and you know, we've, we've let our support um to this valley water after a bit. Some watering restrictions that we're thinking will go into place here only when we put watering restrictions into place, day of the week and final day restrictions. Um, but that will be part of a kind of public outreach effort where everybody's encouraged to do that all the time. And our public works director, Kevin um Schorsman, he, his comments on that were they felt like there were other things, including like turf buyback programs and landscape standards that would actually do more to reduce water use. So um, it sounds like we're pretty well aligned with some staff recommendations there. Um, doesn't mean we have the bandwidth to support them all. Um, so I just want to be really mindful and and for you all to be really mindful as you're putting that together, like what's the who's doing the work in an ongoing basis and um and making sure that we don't put too much on stuff.
Yeah, and I mean, that's been a challenge of the Eboard, the very fact that it's a volunteer board is the accountability behind that and um, so we'll see how or if be friendly needs to evolve in the future, but um with sustainability in mind.
Other things you wanted to move on to here? I think we I don't know if there was other ones that we, that you just mentioned that we wanted to spend time on and you were about to move on to something else.
Yeah, I would just say in terms of be friendly, I think that the, the things that would be helpful to get you know, kind of feedback on and things like we already got that feedback on, but um you know, part of this is just saying, hey, this is kind of a heads up that this is coming, this is what we're working on. Um, one is to say, you know, in terms of this, uh, the zero escape incentive program, is that something that the Board of Trustees would be interested in taking a look at further? And that would be something that we would come back and say, you know, here's really specifically what that would look like. Here's the grant application that we're applying for, here's the responsibilities and how this would go. You know, I think that would be kind of a helpful direction to just say, you know, that's something that Board of Trustees would be interested to field and think about. And then I think the other piece would be um just to, you know, kind of get any further feedback also on landscape standards piece that's also in the nascent stages, but is starting to work on, you know, starting to be moved forward on. So I think would be helpful too to just hear feedback on um, you know, we, we've heard directly from Eric and from Carl and from Russell and from Mark and Kevin, but it would be just helpful to kind of formalize that here also to just get your feedback on on, you know, yes, kind of proceed or, you know, proceed and keeping in mind these different things. I think that would be helpful for be friendly.
Great. So the two questions there are about the zero escape incentive program, which it sounds like the direction you're headed is a um residential, like kind of a fund funded part by the town and part by the state that would be distributed to people for their planning and their their kind of turf five act.
Correct.
So let's start about that first. Is that something that we I mean, person to keep looking into on grants? And anything to watch out for?
I mean, I'd be, since Kevin brought it up in the update on um water efficiency as one of the measures that we thought we should take instead of enacting mandatory watering restrictions, um, I think I think it's worth that completely. It has been the one thing that these people, you know, these people, these very engaged resident. You know, in the specific requests, it's like, hey, can you create this program? And so um and it sounds like it's an amount that would be kind of a cool pilot amount. It's not like we're asking for two hundred thousand dollars, we're going to go nuts. And it's a one time, the thing too is that it's a one time state initiative. So it's not something that we could say, well, let's just apply for it next year. It really has the state funding allocated toward this now. So, right. And so it seems like a maybe doable around that we could find matching funds for whether that is our water, different nights, water efficiency or something else. So I would, I would be supportive of us going after it and I just, and and maybe we call it that as a pilot program, just in people have really good expectations, but it may not be an annual program, we're going to see how this goes. Um, but it would help us lay the groundwork for, oh, this does work. This isn't that big. We could do a small program every year or something like that.
Yeah, and this was the one, I think you said there's eight thousand dollars available at the state level.
There's actually twenty five thousand. So we're, what we're looking for is much
Looking for as much as you can get, let's be honest.
Right, the twenty five thousand is the cap.
Is this something that possibly could come from some water department funds?
I don't know, that's why I was just reading.
I don't think we're going to get that.
No, but I'm just saying, that's something we should at least consider. And again, if this is a one-time grant program, this would be something that we, I would definitely we can't get before twenty five thousand, get what we can and apply for and take advantage of it.
Keep going. Um, so I think it sounds like we support that. It sounds like our staff has recommended that. And I think I already mentioned that my concerns will be who's going to do the work? And then if we put a lot of work into building a program, that there was only one year of state funding, like are we anticipating that this will be ongoing? That we'll need to commit to funding it beyond that at the pool now. Just so that we start digging through that. And I think with your, it's too bad that Mark Ramirez retiring, it's a specific Mark Ramirez, but whoever takes his um place. Um, to really think about, does that, to Marty's question and I think Eric's suggestion of like exploring that, does that fit into the water uh department budget as a water efficiency expenditure?
And you could um talk to Clear also about not them managing it, but they have a lot of experience developing, you know, rebate programs, especially also using state funding with local funding. And I'd be happy to have a conversation of all.
And then the other question was about um landscape standards and whether to pursue that. I think that's another one that we heard from staff. And we talked about watering restrictions that that might be um something worth pursuing. So I think we've got direction from staff on that. To look into landscape standards that would become part of the code.
I guess so. I think I will maybe would be again more inclined to tie them to to the water budget or something and you know, higher fees for bad something as opposed to some out and out restrictions, like you can't do this or that, but maybe it's more like your tactic is as a graduated scale based on what your landscape proposals is and, you know, I don't know. That sounds complicated.
But I hear you and I think that's part of being called be friendly is we don't want to be the bad police running through people's yards of native plants or let's just be friendly here.
Well, I think I'm heartened by the the sense that this organization is kind of like gaining its own momentum outside of the wing of the town to some degree, which I like. So I feel like we have such a great tradition in this town of you know, government adjacent nonprofit entities, whether it's K D and K or Coventure or senior matters or whatever that sort of take things and they make them better than the town would do if the staff was trying to direction upon do these things. But if it has more of the like volunteer community spirit to it, sometimes those are way more effective at people getting the work done, actually. But I think it is important to try to like not bite off too much right up, run out of that and try to do one. And these gardens can become sustain, pretty sustainable and like they get past that five year period of like being established. You know, there's some places over CRMS that were zero gardens, then they had kind of like a lost time and openness or whatever. And now they, you know, are they're not the like complete cornopia maybe that you imagine, but there's like a good two thirds of those plants are still there and now that area has, you know, has all these native plants in it that bloom at different times and things. You made it, maybe didn't get exactly to your perfect you know, search and perfection that people sort of think of as gardens.
This is actually from Colin. Um, he says, be friendly is a great idea. I support the direction of the Eboard. It could help with our water reduction goals. Instead, and a program is worth a try. Please add the Third Street Center as a site slash partner for lawn to pollinator habitat conversion. Um, and I just wanted to comment that I think I want to make sure that both the Eboard and the Board of Trustees is very specific about whether we're talking about zero escaping or pollinator gardens because they're not the same thing. And so they can be, they're related, but I want to make sure the public, when, when it's going in things like me, minutes and everything else, that everyone understands what we're talking about. So I think it could get confusing.
I agree. I think um this mission with be friendly is that the pollinator plants we select are um native to the Great Basin or east parts of the world that have a similar climate. So they are all um drought tolerant plants, the beautiful blooms that unfortunately are very hard to find in nurseries, especially in this valley. So I will just want to say, yes, zero escape can be bountiful, luscious, blooming foliage. We're not looking for redo your lawn gravel. There's actually, they all projects won't fund that because it's um it's a heat trap, it's um, it's a problem. So yeah, I think we need to be clear, but part of our real mission is we're doing both.
Yeah, and I think too, to that point too, Lauren, a lot of the effort around our, the learning tent and our kind of mission and launching is really talking about what do these different things mean and just communicating, you know, communicating what, what pollinator friendly really looks like. Definitely the education focus and
But I do think a lot of people think that when you're talking about zero escaping, you're talking about cactus.
Absolutely, and
You could be, but right.
Moved away from that world, I, or that term in agriculture to more water wise, because zero escaping, think of the rocks with the cactus. Um, it kind of killed itself.
Too thorny.
Yeah, let's um, right, we started a little bit late. I just want to go through um some of these other items. So talked about be friendly, other efforts and subcommittees of the environmental board are working on climate action plan implementation. And then also the electrification, which was the Go EV City, which we but so items one and two in the policy priorities and recommendations are around the implementation of the path to net zero for doing existing buildings. We, you know, we are aware that in some ways for the Eboard to be most effective, we will be become headhunters for a building official. So we know that you know, the picture. So I would just say we're, we are definitely aware of that. But um, we have been with, along with Clear and along with Jeff, Jeff Dickinson, really looking at what are the implementation of that for this first quarter? And how do we move that forward? So that's something that will continue to be a something that Eboard is really advocating for to get that implemented and in in the works. Um, and another aspect kind of sub to that is, which is a part of the path to net zero um, within that pact net zero is no new natural gas and proposed development. Just want to mention that. That's been a big discussion of, of conversation in the Eboard meetings and the focus of of, of, of not having further um natural gas lines to to development. So that's been a, a big effort and and a kind of interest from the Eboard side.
And I think that's in our path to net zero that we worked with Clear and Jeff Bond, um, and it kind of, remember there being a table with a really good timeline of like recommended kind of steps on on that.
Right, I just wanted, yeah, I just want to underscore that just because that's one that like particularly can see on the build point around that, that's been an important aspect.
And I, I think we could, what would be helpful when those kind, we have those kinds of documents too, is revisiting that of like, okay, this is the timeline we said we committed to two years ago or whenever that was. Um, where are we? How's it looking? And how are, I think in the clean energy world, like how is technology keeping up with um being able to implement some of these things?
Yeah, um, and then the, thanks for that. And then the, then the second one is committing to net zero development for the town center projects. And yeah, I'll just say that's a recommendation from, from the board.
Okay, on that, it was in the, just the interviews today where we're starting to interview, um, our spaces interviewing, um, architect, designing firms to partner with. And that's one of the criteria that they have to talk about. Um, so we talked about that at length, um, with the, the first applicant today and between Monday and noon, we'll talk about the rest of them tomorrow. So um, they all know that that's a goal of the town, um, at least to be all electric, whether they can fit all the solar on those roofs to cover all that, I think is another question, but um, it's clearly something that we're, we're aiming for.
And it's also just to, um, we just had an update on the pool project. And um, while it might not be, there, there's, it's still very top of the conversation. All the consultants are really aware of the goal that we set and are um are evaluating it. And the exciting thing for me on that, and then it'd be great to be related to the Eboard is um, that we're talking about it before even hiring the architects and developers, which frequently in projects, just like on landscaping. Um, if you, if you don't do it in the initial design, then trying to do it at the last minute doesn't ever really work well. So um but it's pretty awesome that our board has prioritized that. And a lot of it is thanks to the, the work of the Eboard and um, our other partners helping keep that at the top of our list.
Yeah, and I would just say, you know, from our standpoint, I think also to the pool, you know, the, the pool house building certainly um, you know, making sure that that's a commitment to net zero. And I think part of this too is saying, you know, it can certainly be a part of the RFP that the RFP and that's the goal. We're really having a commitment to it as a different, you know, a different deal. So um, that's, that would be our push to have this be really like publicly you know, made known that this is what we're trying to do and this is what we're trying to be making happen, not just saying we'd like to do it, but we'll see where the budget comes back. It's a difference to say this is our pledge and we're going to make this happen. So I would say that's from the Eboard standpoint would be the push to really make a, make a pledge and you know, ha- have that be a public statement.
Yeah, I don't know if we're there yet. I mean, I think we're committed to making most of those projects happen and I don't want to make a pledge that's going to prevent the affordable housing or the pool from happening. So we've made it at one of the criteria for selection of firms, we're making it part of the conversation. They're going to bring back to us what's feasible and we're going to go from there. I'm not going to make a pledge to something that then they say, well, we can't meet it. So we don't get a pool when we've got authorization for it.
Yeah, well, well, we're going to keep just, you know, to know from our Eboard side of something we're going to keep being on our radar. And, you know, I think it's also at, at the early stages, it's a, it's appropriate for that to be a goal. And if we get closer to determine it's more formally determined kind of what you, what is that, what form does that actually take and and how can we kind of craft that performance standards so that there's a, you know, clarity around what, what the target is.
Well, and I think um it'll be great to have the Eboard engaged in those um discussions, particularly with the town center project, because we are going to hear from um art spaces and developer. And we will have like, here's what we can do. And here's what this budget is. And here's what we can do here. And, you know, it's going to be a very public process. And so um you know, the Eboard can weigh in at that time as well, where it's like, okay, we do want an option B and here's our, you know, maybe it's net zero, but here's what might have had people off the project, you know, and not saying anything will be. But we need to be really mindful that that's, that's where we're at and
Um, every project that we put out to bid to do anything is extremely. Extremely, in some way, the word, much higher than anticipated in cost. And so um it's kind of this interesting world to be in, where also having awesome affordable housing downtown. As a huge climate impact, um, bringing workers here instead of them having to commute, and so. When I look at projects like that as a, you know, two years climate advocate in my work life for a really long time, um. I'm always weighing those two things. And we might not have the perfect net zero building, but we're bringing fifty families living downtown up and down, so. I would really wanna push the E board to also be looking at our project in that broad scope of like. What are our big, what are our big benefits for our community and climate?
Yeah, no, totally with you on that, and I think thinking about it from a larger, you know, there's a lot of different kind of targets and ways to. Frame and think about climate um. Climate action and build environment, one of those is net zero, there's a lot of other ways to kind of think about that and. Um, put into a framework what that is, but yeah, I'm I'm totally with you, and I think that that's something that. Um, is is helpful, you know, helpful feedback, but also helpful to kind of think about how do we. Communicate this and talk about this, not just from the E board's recommendation, but also from the from the board's kind of public. You know, comment on what's on what's happening, but um. You know, think thinking about the broader um. Ways that that does have a positive. Can have a positive um impact from a climate standpoint, but then also pushing that down, you know, pushing that um further than. Um, as far as we can.
I think we're on the same page, we're gonna strive for it, we made it a priority, I'm just not gonna take.
Um, those are my, those are the items that um I had here, um. So, yeah, that's where we are now, I guess that if there's any other kind of further questions. Um, the other question I would just have would be, I know that in the um board kind of unification. Getting all on the same page that the boards have the same rules. Um, it would be all send, we had a ready feedback from the E board. Yesterday, but it would be helpful just that we know kind of what the standard check-in schedule is and budget schedule is, so we can plan that out from our meetings. Um, that would be really helpful for us to be able to be, you know, most effective in terms of our recommendations and also. Yeah, getting the. From the front, Lauren, so. Thank you, but that was just some uh a note to just make sure that we can be clear in terms of our process so that we can help.
Yeah, hopefully that's standardizing some of those things, also all that kind of stuff, and we're talking about maybe a kind of annual training, kind of update and things like that, where we can say like.
And advertise for new members, kind of all at the same time, to kind of make it, somebody brought up a. Where we also get together and meet other people from other commissions. Yeah. Another reason to party.
Any other feedback, questions or comments for the board? And I would say it's the same thing I said to P and Z, just we really appreciate your your volunteer efforts, I mean, I think is. Trustees have said these things like what you're doing with the Be Friendly Initiative or taking ideas that have been um. Around for a long time and uh and giving them a home and putting a process behind it, and you're doing it in a really professional way. As Marty said, it's a really collaborative way, we appreciate that you're working with staff, you're working with other commissions, and that's where you get stuff done, right? So, uh, we don't always see that, and we're seeing it right now, and we really appreciate it, so thank you for for hanging on for your leadership and. Um, today, uh, Dina, sorry, we haven't been until tonight, but thank you for all of your work and it's great to have you on board, and yeah.
And just for notes, just Dina is a member of the Be Friendly, but not an official member of the E board, so she's part of our sub. Which is very welcome, but just for Jessica.
And Dina, what's your last name?
Bowers, B O W E R S, thank you.
Any else for you in the order? Thanks very much, everybody.